All right, as we let everyone into our meeting, just give us a few seconds. We apologize for the late start. All right. And it looks like it's leveled out, so we're just going to go ahead and get started. And to gavel in our meeting, I do have a special helper today. If you'd like to come up and use the gavel, if you wouldn't mind coming up. So right there, that's going to be yours. So you're going to give me three good boom, boom, booms with it, right? Go ahead. Thank you very much. And with that tap of the gavel, I would like to call to order the Seneca Valley School District School Board Work Session Meeting of March 1st, 2021. And at this time, I'd ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence in the memory of the lives lost due to COVID-19 and in reflection of those who are mourning loved ones recovering from the illness or who have been negatively impacted during this time. Thank you very much. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask Ms. Andressi to come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, board members. I'd like to introduce to all of you our I-Led the Pledge student this evening, John Vesu. John is a fourth grader at Hayne Elementary School. John, if you want to join us at the microphone? Perfect.
Yes.
So, John, I'm going to tell them a little bit about you. John is the son of Ian and Maria Vesu of Cranberry Township. He was nominated this evening by Hayne Elementary Principal, Kristen White. And I'd like to welcome and thank Ms. White for being here this evening in support of John. Also part of John's fan club are his teachers, his classroom teacher, Katie Rengers, and Lindsay, Ms. Lewick, his support teacher. So thank both of you for being here tonight in support of John. John is known by his peers and his teachers as someone who always has a sunny disposition, which you have all seen. He's always happy to be around his classmates and his teachers. He tells us he likes all the subjects in school and that he could not pick just one. He enjoys swimming, and he's currently learning how to play the piano. And he is obsessed with cars, in particular, the Ford brand. We were doing quite a bit of talking about that before you all came in this evening. And I asked him, would you be willing to share your favorite car? So, John, you want to share with them what your favorite Ford car is and why?
Hmm, yes. And I remember I like a Ford Taurus 2019 with the V6 engine, six-speed automatic transmission, and five seats when they're heated. All right, all right, okay.
And what is your favorite color? If you could pick any color?
I like the Ford Taurus color. I like black.
That's awesome. I told him, just six more years and you'll be able to drive.
Apple CarPlay.
CarPlay. So he's got his car already picked out. Only six more years to go. So at this time, I would invite all of you to join John here in the auditorium and anyone watching from home. Stand if you are able, as he leads us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. John, when you're ready, go ahead and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What a fantastic job.
I am amazing. I like that. What I think.
So earlier this evening, John received his medal and his I-Led the Pledge t-shirt and some Seneca swag that he actually will be wearing to school tomorrow because is it Patriotic Day at school, Red, White, and Blue Day? So it'll be the perfect shirt for him to wear tomorrow. So thank you again for being here. Great job.
Thank you very much. This time, I'd ask Lisa to call the roll, please.
Ms. Bradel?
Here.
Mr. DiTullio?
Here.
Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Hester?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Nickel?
President.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Whitterson?
Here.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say that it is, it's very nice to have almost the entire board here first time, and I don't even know how long anymore. So it's nice to see everyone in person again. And, you know, hopefully Ms. Harrison will be able to join us at an upcoming meeting. We'll get everyone here for a change, get some normalcy coming back to the world again. So it'll be very nice. We're going to move on to information reports. I'll ask Ms. Andressi back to the mic, please.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I am actually pleased and very privileged to share with all of you tonight a new recognition program that we have set up for our staff. This program called the SV's All-Star Club was created as a way to express our gratitude to Seneca Valley classified employees. So that's our secretaries, paraprofessionals, maintenance, and cafeteria, and our bus drivers who go above and beyond in their roles here at the district. We created this program as a way to highlight these individuals who oftentimes are the unsung heroes of our schools. We intend to recognize each month here at a school board meeting, a new member of this elite All-Star Club. Tonight, we will start with Stan Hefner, a bus driver who often, often goes above and beyond his duties as a driver for Seneca Valley and as an employee for ABC Transit. So at this time, I would like to invite in Mr. Jim Pearson, our Transportation Director, who is joining us via Zoom, to recognize and introduce Mr. Hefner. Mr. Pearson, are you with us?
Yes, thank you. Each time that I have the opportunity to speak to an audience, I like to remind them and to think about education as the human body and that the schools are the heart of education and the buses are the routes, are like the circulatory system of the body. And you can't have one without the other. So it's my pleasure to introduce Stan Hefner. Stan is a model for other bus drivers as well as a role model for his students. Early on in the first years of Stan's bus driving for Seneca Valley, he faced some very stressful situations, but he handled them with the utmost professionalism. And I would imagine that he gets that professionalism from, he is also a jazz musician, so has experience with handling crowds. So Stan lives in Katanning, and he gets up at 3:00 AM to make that drive to the garage to get his bus ready for the day. And people ask him why he would do that. And his reply is, it's for the kids. And we have a driver shortage at Seneca Valley, just like every other district across America. And, but if people knew what Stan knows, how great it is to be a driver, they would sign up right away. So please welcome our first member of the All-Star Club, Stan Hefner.
Hello, everyone.
Are you on mute?
Stan, do you want to share some of your experience? When we were talking earlier about one of the things that I guess tugged at your heartstrings when there was a period of time that you were going to leave Seneca Valley? And you shared with me a story.
Yes, I, I, when I first became a bus driver, I initially wanted to drive bus for four years. And when that time period had come, I had told my students that, you know, my last day would be. And they were actually disembarking the bus that day. And this one student was one of the last ones to disembark. Some of the other students, you know, they were teary-eyed too, but this student actually really started to cry and sob, and it really shocked me. And I didn't realize that the impact that I had on his life. And of course, little did he know the impact he had on mine. Because when I did go to the other company to drive, I drove for Butler Motor Transit, and things weren't the same. So I ended up coming back, and he was the one reason, this one student was one of the reasons why he came back to Seneca, to ABC to drive for Seneca. The parents, the students, the nurturing that they accept as they realize that you like them, and I do. I appreciate them. They're special. And they help you to realize your importance as to being a role model for them. And I just try to do my best. And I love it. I'm going on, what, well, this is probably seven years, seven or eight years. It's been a journey, but I love it.
Thanks, Stan.
So earlier in the week, because Stan obviously lives in Katanning, he decided to join us via Zoom. So we stopped over at his bus and provided him with his All-Star Club star and some Seneca materials. And I know that he said that he would be wearing those with pride. And it is our pleasure to have him as a part of our district. So thank you, Stan, and thank you, Jim.
Thank you, thank you. I actually have one of those paraphernalias on right now, one of the clothing, the sweatshirt. The wooded sweatshirt. Yeah, I really appreciate it. I just, you've blown me away. I've been blessed.
Thank you, Stan. Since this is the first time we've done this, I'm going to ask if there's any comments from any of the board members or from anybody else in administration. There is none. I don't see anyone. Oh, Dr. Vitale?
Thank you. And Mr. Hefner, I can't see you in front of me right now, but I know who you are. And when I saw that you were the first one chosen for this elite club, I was not surprised. I cannot tell you how proud I am of you and how much you've touched my life, and I don't get to see you every day. So I just want to thank you for being, for loving on our children. That's what Reverend Moon would have said, for loving on our children. Thank you, Mr. Hefner.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to add, you know, and I think Dr. Vitale, you know, we had Reverend Moon with us for a number of years on the board, and as a bus driver, we saw that unique perspective. And to be honest, I, it was something I never really considered as a board member, even as a parent. Yes, I know my children go on the bus every day, but really never thought of who that person was and how much of an influence they were. Meeting Reverend Moon and yourself, you folks are amazing at what you do and the impact that you have on the kids' lives. You see them every day, you know, twice a day, sometimes more. And the fact that you make that impact and you keep doing it and you get up at 3:00 in the morning to do that, that blows me away. I'm so appreciative that there's, you know, yourself and folks like you that are willing to do that still, even through this shortage. I understand why. Who wants to get up at 3:00 in the morning, right? So we do appreciate everything you've done, all the sacrifices you've made for the district and for the students of the route. So we look forward to seeing you, sir. We appreciate it again. Thank you very much.
I do, I do want to close and say that I really appreciate Seneca Valley School District. You are a class act.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. We will then move on on our agenda, back to Ms. Andressi.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items of recognition this evening. Seneca Valley seniors David Choi, Zachary Garcia, Sibran Jaya-Raman, Parker Logue, Ananya Rao, Avani Solunki, Anup Savio, and Dora White have been named finalists in the 66th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program, held by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. These seniors are eight of approximately 15,000 finalists and will now advance to the next level of the program where they will have the opportunity to earn a national merit scholarship and ultimately the merit scholar title. So we have more information in your backup if you'd like to read a little bit more about them. We congratulate them and wish them luck at the next level. Our second item tonight, possessing a 3,000-point lead and a total score of 32,631 points, the Seneca Valley Academic Decathlon Team placed first and took home 12 medals at the recent Western Pennsylvania Regional Academic Decathlon Competition. The students competed in eight events, essay, art, economics, literature, mathematics, music, science, and social science. And the next competition will be against the top schools throughout the state later this month. Then we will certainly keep you informed of how they do. More information is again in your backup. On the next page, under dates to remember, March 3rd marks the end of the K-6 second trimester. March 8th will be the start of our spring sports season. March 12th will be the K-6 Report of Student Progress release. March 13th will be an SAT testing date here at Seneca Valley Senior High School that begins at 7:30 AM. March 14th marks our daylight savings time, the start of our daylight savings time. March 18th will be the end of the 7 through 12 SV AOC or cyber third nine weeks. March 20th, if you can believe it, spring will begin that day. March 23rd will be the end of the 7 through 12 third nine weeks for traditional students. And March 27th will mark the beginning of Passover. And then March 31st will be the 7 through 12 report card release date. And that is all I have, Mr. President, unless any of you have questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from any board members? Hearing none, we will move on in our agenda to the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School 2020-2021 Budget Presentation. And we do have Dr. Hyler here to present. And I guess for an introduction, I'm going to ask Mr. Peterson, since you are a VOTEC representative, if you would introduce Dr. Hyler, please.
I don't know, Mr. DiTullio. I'm a little aggrieved this year with Dr. Hyler because for all the years I've been on the JOC and the first meeting we have in a year, we were always treated incredibly well to a meal that's put together by the culinary group. And this year, and under Dr. Hyler's first real year to lead us down that path, nothing happened. I just, I don't understand it. It's, Dr. Hyler, I hope you know I'm kidding. I think we're finishing up, or we're at the end of a really good year at the VOTEC in spite of all the challenges. Dr. Hyler has persisted daily with her efforts to keep things on an even keel, and I think she's been fairly successful at that. We had a presentation at the last JOC. The next JOC meeting, of course, is this Thursday, so we're a little offset in time here. But at the last JOC meeting, we had a presentation of the budget that you'll see tonight. And I think you'll find it's more than acceptable. I certainly would endorse it. One of the things I just ask everyone to remember that's a little bit different about the career and technical school, when it comes to budgeting, they cannot carry over dollars at the end of the year. If there's an excess of revenue over expenses, those expenses or those dollars are turned back to the sponsoring schools. So it's a little bit of a different management challenge for Dr. Hyler than it is for us here at Seneca. And sometimes when you go through the budget, you think, well, why isn't there a fund balance? Why isn't there a reserve? There can't be. It's not, there's not allowed to be. So with those introductory comments, Dr. Hyler, are you with us?
I am. Thank you so much for the introduction, Mr. Peterson.
All yours.
Good evening, Seneca Valley. Again, I'm Dr. Hyler, Director of Butler County AVTS. Thank you for the opportunity for me to present the 2020-2022 Proposed Budget this evening. I'm joined this evening also by Rebecca Davis, our Business Manager at BCAVTS. You will see her on the screen. Seneca Valley Board members, in your individualized envelope, you'll see a proposed budget for 2122 as well as a ballot for you to complete. After the presentation, please check yes, no, or abstain, and please complete the sections with your name, date, as well as school district. Please mail these back to us in the self-addressed stamped envelope by March 29th, 2021. At our April 1st, 2021 JOC meeting, we'll open the ballots in person. At this point, I will start the budget presentation. If you go to page one, you'll see three sections. Total operating budget, total operating budget with budgetary reserve, participating school districts, budget pay, operating budget payments. I'd like to first draw your attention to the first section, total operating budget. The proposed budget for 2122 is $6,075,289 with an increase of 122810. I'd like to next draw your attention to the second section. In this section, there's a $30,000 budgetary reserve in place. The budgetary reserve is for, is in place for catastrophic events. The districts aren't billed for this unless, of course, there is an event as such. And the third section is ascending school districts' payments. You will see the total increase in this section is 109369. Any questions?
Going on?
Okay, we'll go to page two. On page two, you'll see the summary of the budget by object code. I'll spend a little bit of time on this page. Again, object 000 is the budgetary reserve that I just mentioned on page one, section two. Object 100 includes salaries with an increase of 55716. The descriptor in the notes section gives more detail, and I'll read those to you. Object 100 includes salaries for all employees. Salaries increased primarily due to contracted wage increases for employees covered under the teacher's contract. Contracted wage increases equate to a base salary increase of approximately $46,000. Object 200 includes employee benefits and has an increase of 53195. Object 200 includes benefits such as medical, dental, vision, life, Piers' employer contributions. Medical and dental assurances are projected to increase 5% from current year premiums for us. Vision and life insurances are on rate holds. The Piers' employer contribution rate is increasing from 3451 to 3494. So you'll see the salaries and benefits comprised of approximately 76% of the budget, which is typical with a total of 108911. This is a large amount of our proposed 122A10 increase. This includes all of our employees, including substitutes. Object 300 is purchased professional and technical services. There's a slight decrease here of $195. This remains relatively consistent. The object code includes budgeted expenditures for costs for student information systems such as Skyward Services, solicitor fees, audit services, network engineer services for building out the school's network, et cetera. Object 400, which is purchased property services, there's an increase of 8,744. This is, this includes maintenance agreements, repair and equipment, such as inspections. Costs projected to increase primarily due to school vehicle repairs. Object 5, other purchase services, we have a decrease of 17540. This projected, this includes projected insurance premiums, general liability, property, advertising. This decrease to this object code is largely attributed to the decrease in estimated Perkins expenditures, and I will address this further on page three. Object 600, supplies, we have a decrease of 6,000. This includes projected expenditures for vocational programs, supplies, textbook, software licensing. This object code decreased due to shifting projects within the tech and maintenance departments, as well as decreasing estimated costs for electricity and natural gas. Object 700, equipment, we have an increase of 27500. And this is needed expenditures for instructional equipment, replacement of video surveillance server, engine stores, et cetera. Object 800. This, these are the figures above reflective budget Perkins and adult ed expenditures. But I'll explain this further on page three. Any questions or concerns thus far? Okay. All right, on page three, I'm going to jump around a little bit. We're going to start on the top right of the page. You'll see anticipated revenues in this section, social security, retirement, and interest are all standard. The state reimburses us 50%, but I'd like to draw your attention to the adult evening amount of 35018. This is funded through tuition of students. If the cost is not covered, adult ed generally does not run. I'd also like to draw your attention to the Perkins portion. The amount of approximately 260356 is our allocation for this current school year. Perkins funding for the 2122 school year is not available at this time, so we use the current year's allocation for next year's budget. Again, this is not billed to the participating districts, but rather included in the budget as part of our operations. If you turn your attention to page five, if you flip forward two pages, you'll see in the description category that shows adult evening and Perkins expenses. When you see that in the description categories, if you add these up, you will see dollar for dollar, these expenses add up to the amount shown on page three as revenue. So if you go back to page three, in the top left portion, the average daily membership for the prior three years is shown. According to our Articles of Agreement, we bill the participating districts based on three years total ADM. And when we move to page four, I'll show you the impact of this, this decrease on your school or your district. The bottom left portion, this shows the 2019 state assessed values from state tax, from the state tax equalization board, and 2019-20 instructional time membership reports that come from your child accounting reports. And on the bottom right, this is the 2122 estimated secondary career and tech ed subsidy. These percentages are used for estimating operating budget payments, which will be shown on page four. On page four, the top portion is 2021-2122 school year, bottom is the current year. First column is the operating budget less the revenues that we explained to you on the prior page, rather second column, I apologize, less the revenues that we just explained to you on the prior page, then we deduct the state adjustment. We then add the equipment back in over the breakpoint. We then come to this amount that you see for Seneca Valley is 613366. This is a decrease of 8488 from this school year. To recap, the total operating budget payment increase for the schools is 2122, again, 109369. And then beyond this, pages five through 10 explains further details of the budget. If you have any questions or concerns about anything I just said, because it is quite a bit, I'm here, Mrs. Davis is here, and we can answer questions accordingly to the best of our abilities at this time.
Thank you very much. I believe Jim Nickel has a question, so we're going to go to him first.
Okay.
Evening, Dr. Hyler. Good evening, Rebecca. I haven't seen you folks in a little while. Just, I just have one question, and it's, I don't know, Rebecca, you might feel this is something you can address, but certainly, Dr. Hyler, in terms of the expectations from the State of PA, I mean, I hone in on page four and see that we're keeping that flat essentially year over year. You know, I know we're early in March, but do you have sort of a vision into your thoughts about where we'll end up or you will end up for this fiscal year? And maybe just give me some color into why you're forecasting that just sort of a flat year over year, given the budget that the governor's put out?
Mrs. Davis, will you speak to this?
Absolutely. So if you look at the proposed state funds, originally, these were calculated as of June. That was the most current data that we had available when we worked on the budget. And as you are familiar, when we take the calculation for the subsidy and we include the ADMs that they were using were from a prior year from 1819, they did not include the 1920 ADMs. So when we include the 1920 ADMs, and generally for VOTECs, there is a 10% reduction in the subsidy. And so when we take that and we budget accordingly with it, the calculation remains a little over $750,000. We then talked with many representatives between PACTA and PASBO and PDE to try to get a sense of where we would be going with our VOTEC subsidy. And at the time, it was before the governor had presented the budget, and there were a lot of talks of just being careful with the budget because they had initially thought that it was going to be a little bit tougher in terms of our subsidy. So in keeping with that and using the calculation, we went ahead and kept that level funded at $750,000. Now, we are pleasantly happy and surprised to see that the governor did not decrease a proposed budget for the VOTEC. So, you know, we hope that that comes So, you know, we hope that that comes to fruition. And if it does, you know, keep in mind, whatever we build to the participating districts will be the actual subsidy. This is just what we are budgeting at the time.
Excellent. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Mr. Choa.
Mr. Peterson.
I might just point out, and perhaps Dr. Hyler's going to touch on this later, but while it's nice to hear that there's a decrease in one of these line items, it really reflects the fact that Seneca is not sending as many students to the CTE as we used to. And I know there's a lot of effort being put in at the, at the VOTEC to recruit from all of the member organizations. So I think to the extent that we as a board can voice our support for CTE, it'll help our kids that, that, you know, want to go into the trades and whatnot. And it'll also help the, the VOTEC to, to keep its volumes up. So it's a mixed message. It's, it's, it's nice to see a number that's smaller than last year. Unfortunately, it's smaller because fewer kids are taking advantage of the opportunity.
Couldn't agree more with you. I, this is one number I wish would go up every year because it means that there's more students taking advantage of what the VOTEC can offer. Also, I know that, you know, you folks struggled mightily, you know, as far as us getting, you know, kids back in person is important to us, it's doubly so. It's VOTEC, and we understand that. So, you know, you really had some, some challenging times up there. I'm assuming, you know, Dr. McKinley, you know, has addressed this, you know, in trying to recruit more kids. And I guess Mr. Peters, or yeah, Mr. Peter, Mr. Nichol has a comment he wants to make on this subject as well. So I'm just going to turn it over to him real quick.
Well, it's not, it's not a comment, it's just a, maybe a question or a request. If it's something that we can, you know, include as an agenda item at a, at a future meeting. I mean, I did notice that our ADM went from, I think it was 120, something, 119, 120 down to, or excuse me, yeah, to 104. And it just, again, I just request maybe at some future meeting, we can spend a little time and talk about where we're at and in that process.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. We have, I feel, I believe there's more communication, but it's just getting the kids here. And we've talked about this before, and we have some ideas, and I'd like to share them at some point, too, once we have them more finalized.
Absolutely. Know that, you know, you have the full support of the Seneca Valley School District and Seneca Valley Board. We know how important it is, and we, we think you're doing a wonderful job up there. And, you know, Mr. Peterson has already voiced his support of the budget. You know, I don't see that being an issue. And, you know, we wish you well in, in everything that you do. And, you know, I, I hope to get up there again soon. It's one of the best tours I've ever taken, and I recommend everyone do it. Have your, your children go up there. It's an amazing experience. So we thank you for, for the time tonight. And, you know, if there is any other questions, I'm sure that we will, we'll get in touch, but I really don't see it. But we appreciate you folks taking the time out of your busy nights to, to spend it with us.
Thank you for giving us the time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. So we're going to move on in our agenda to the agency reports, and we're going to go into VOTEC. But, Mr. Peterson, is there anything else that you have to add after all that?
Not really. I just want to reiterate the fact that you have a ballot in your packet with a self-addressed, self-addressed stamped envelope. If you could fill that out even tonight, maybe, and, and leave it with Ms. Mislin to be mailed tomorrow, that would be great. I'm just afraid if you walk out the door with it next month, you'll say, oh, I should have done that. So please give us your thoughts. Any questions, just ask, and then if we could turn them into you, perhaps you can mail them for us tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. It, it's always been interesting, the, the way that they do the budget to VOTEC. It's not only approved by the boards themselves, but the individual members also have to send the ballots to. I think it's unique in that way. So thank you very much. If there's no questions, we'll, we'll move on in the agenda. And I'll take this one as the IU report. We did have a meeting last week on Wednesday, and at that meeting, we did hire a new Director of Business Services, Maureen Werewe. And she's replacing Patricia Conley, who resigned, and she took a, another position much closer to her home. Ms. Werewe came to us from the Commodore Perry School District, where, where she was the business manager. And I look forward to working with her for the contract negotiations. And then hopefully, we'll get to meet her in person, all of us, next year at their budget presentation. We also had a presentation of the 2019, 2020 audit by our auditor Cypher and Cypher. And it was a clean audit. The auditors were pleased with the cooperation and information, communication that they had while they performed that audit remotely. Now, it was difficult, but they were able to get through, and they were very pleased with the way that the IU staff was able to help them. And finally, as I spoke to earlier, the MIU for budget, the general operating budget, GOB, is on the agenda for approval next week. The GOB is for, is $167,771 lower than it was last year, a 4.6% reduction. The general operating budget is a fraction of the total expenditures of the IU's total $80 million plus budget. And the contributions from the member districts is going to be the same this year as it has been for the last 28 years. So I am recommending approval of the budget that you'll see in, in the backup that we have for next week. So are there any questions on that IU budget? Hearing none, we'll move on to the legislative report. I have put some things together I'd like to, to talk about. And since we're impacted more directly from the state government with the funding and legislation, my report's going to focus on, on what we're, we're seeing on the state and level of legislation. So the state senate was in session this past week. The House of Representatives was not in session, and they were having budget hearings at the senate and other committee hearings that, last week. And both chambers are going to return to session on March 15. There's a few items of interest. The one is there's a voucher proposal being drafted, and it could be introduced in the Senate Education Committee as early as this coming week. And the bill is called the Excellence in Education for All Act. And the language is not available yet. The cosponsorship has sent a memo out stating that the key components of the bill are going to include education opportunity counts for the most vulnerable students, expansion of the existing EITC, OSTC tax credit scholarship programs, charter school reforms and innovations, equal access to the best public education, regardless of the ZIP code, and protection for coronavirus learning pods. So we'll be looking forward to seeing what's going to come out of the senate committee for that. There's also been a mandate waiver proposal that Senator Wayne Lagerholic has introduced in the senate, which is Senate Bill 73. And it's a proposal that would establish a program to allow public schools to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for a waiver of many, but not all of the state imposed mandates. Certain laws and regularly, regulations would not be waivable, such as those relating to student health and safety, academic standards and assessments, special education, protected handicap students, gifted education, student attendance, and professional educator conduct standards, among others. Senate Bill 73 has been referred to the Senate Education Committee for consideration. And finally, the flexibility for legal advertising requirements. Senator John DeSanto has introduced Senate Bill 252, which is going to allow school districts, counties, and municipalities to advertise public notices either electronically or in printed format by choosing from a menu of options. The legislation would provide flexibility in meeting these requirements in a way that will improve efficiency, increase readership, and reduce costs. And allows the local governments flexibility to reach more of their constituents. Senate Bill 252 has referred to the senate, a local government committee for consideration. Hopefully, that will pass and just make life easier for all of us. Mr. Nichol, I think you had another that you wanted to add, or we?
Well, I mean, you, you've covered most of what I thought might be material to bring to the board. The only addition that I might suggest that you and I discussed was just making sure that everyone knew that. It, it appears to me that the U.S. Department of Education has given flexibility to delay our standardized testing until the fall. And from what I understand, the Pennsylvania Department of Education has notified the USD that they will take advantage of that. And so I'm not sure what the next step is, but they've made that submission to the US Department of Education. So it's an expectation that all of that will be delayed to the fall of 2021.
Thank you, sir. One other issue I forgot to mention is we did receive a letter from the senate GOP leadership, and it was also sent to us directly by our, one of our senators that covers the school district, Elder Vogel. And basically, it was a, a reminder that, you know, the pandemic relief funding that we'll be receiving as other schools and the Commonwealth will be receiving is a one-time funding, and we should not rely on that as a reoccurring funding source. I believe this stems back to the 2009, 10 school year where there was a, a, a cut in the, the general funding of, of education, public education in Pennsylvania. And it was backfilled for that one year with some federal stimulus money that was available at the time, and it never came back. And if you remember, we did have some very trying times, you know, from 2009 on because of that reduction in funding. So they're, they're trying to make sure, you know, history doesn't repeat itself. I know we learned that lesson well. We would never do that. We would not use that as reoccurring costs. But, you know, we did get that, that notification, that letter. So we were appreciative of, you know, the legislature at least remembering that. So they learned from history at least, hopefully. So is there any other questions or comments on, on the legislative issues? Hearing none. In your backup, you will find the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate, high activities, athletics, tax collection reports, and capital projects funds. And that's going to bring us to our next item on the list, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI updates. And that's Dr. McCarty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a few minutes and update the board on some of the work we've done this past month regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. On February 9th, we had our most recent community conversation. As you recall, Dr. Roberts facilitates these meetings that include community members with members of our leadership team and Mr. Nichol and Mr. Peterson representing the board of directors. This meeting focused on developing an equity statement for the district. And the goal of the equity statement will be to communicate our priority on providing equitable opportunities for all students. One area of focus is the provision of the appropriate tools, opportunities, and supports for students. And the group has emphasized that this must be a wide effort, including contributions from staff, students, parents, and community members. Furthermore, we discussed how to hold ourselves and individuals accountable when they fall short of expectations of what we as a collective group are trying to accomplish. Another area I'd like to touch on is the work Dr. McKinley, Dr. Pallano, and I have continued this past month in the K through 12 curriculum meetings. One area of focus is the examination and audit of our current resources and curriculum. In addition, we are working with teachers to vet additional resources through the lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Finally, as you're aware, members of our core team continue to work with our DEI consultant, Dr. Gadson. Through this work, recreated a plan, in addition to the work being done by principals and teachers in our schools, of addressing all of our non-instructional departments, such as informational technology, buildings and grounds, transportation, and business and finance. Essentially, any department that may or may not have a direct connection to students, however, are a critical component to allow our district to function in supporting students. This approach is an example of how to look at our district community from a holistic perspective to make sure all areas of our district understand and work toward the goals with diversity, equity, and inclusion. Mr. President, that concludes our update for this month, unless there are questions.
Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much, Dr. McCarty. We appreciate it and look forward to future updates. We'll move on to our COVID-19 update, and Dr. I tell.
Thank you. As of today, and this just happened earlier today, the Pennsylvania travel restrictions were list lifted by the governor. And there were, in addition, some leniency towards indoor and outdoor numbers and percentages from 10 to 15%. But it's important to note with both of those, we must still maintain six feet of distance. So that would include our indoor sports spectators as well as outdoor. We still need to maintain that six feet of distance. To date, we have 110 employees out of about 980 that have been vaccinated either with one shot or two. They have qualified in the 65 or older, as well as qualifying under 14 to 64 with underlying health issues as related to being at more risk for COVID. So I'm pleased to tell you that our school nurses, as well as administrators, have worked diligently to find vaccine slots for our staff. And while 110 is something to celebrate, I am still disappointed that we have 950-plus bus drivers and others who have not been vaccinated. So I'm, I'm disappointed how long this is taking to get to our frontline, and I'll talk more about that later. The PCR positivity rate very much moving in the right direction. The most recent seven days, February 5th, February 19th through the 25th is 4.8%. That's very good. That's the best we've seen in a very long time. And that is down from the prior week at 5.2%. As you know, this is one of several thresholds that moved us to moderate as a county. And we need to stay at 10% or lower in order to continue to meet one of several thresholds. We met the PCR positivity rate for five weeks in a row now to stay in moderate. Incident rate, most recent seven days, February 19th through the 25th, per 100,000 residents is at 60.7. When we first opened our buildings, we were looking at four to five cases in the county per day. And we were concerned. Now we're looking at 60.7, and we're celebrating how things have changed. That is down from the previous week at 64.4. We've met this threshold of 100 or less to move our county to moderate transmission for the third week in a row. So again, celebrate, but don't let our guards down. The differences in confirmed cases from the most recent seven days to the previous seven days, we are down by eight cases, and the week prior, we were down by 44 cases. The Butler County daily COVID rate, the 14-day rolling average that we keep track of in our office with Lisa, is down to 33.9. And so that is a good sign as well. ZIP code cases over the weekend, including Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we had 25 new cases. That is good news. But again, I'll remind you, we had a lot less than that in August and September. When we look at the Seneca Valley COVID dashboard, as of today, we have 10 active student cases for active staff cases. Some of those will come off tomorrow. We have 76 students in a quarantine and four staff in quarantine. And then we had three new cases today, so there will be a letter going out this evening with additional students that need to be quarantined. And that's what happens when you move out of cohort into the four-day-a-week because we cannot maintain six feet of social distance. However, things are going very well in the four-day-a-week model, and we're very pleased. And we're able to keep things stable with contact tracing. And our nurses are just really spending a lot of time looking for vaccine slots and trying to keep up on any cases that we have in the district. So I can't thank them enough. A lot of questions, you know, every, it's on everyone's minds, so we'll address it five days per week. When can we do this? Well, you know, it has always been our goal to have students in school for those that choose the in-person model as frequently as possible. We will continue to monitor the numbers this week. We are hoping that beginning March 9th, next Tuesday, that the board would vote on Monday, on March 8th, to bring students back five days a week. However, we need to continue to monitor the COVID numbers for our county and ZIP codes. Because today, Dr. Rochelle Walensky, the director for the CDC, said in an interview of many things, but I'll use one of her quotes. The number of new confirmed COVID cases in the United States is leveling off at a very concerningly high number following weeks of declining cases and deaths. So we need to celebrate. We've made a lot of progress, but we don't want to lose any of that footing, and we want to keep things in perspective because it's leveling off, but it's staying at a high number in the United States. We received notice today, actually from the press. We received notice today, actually from the press, not from our governor's office, nothing official there, and not from any other official sources like PDE or PADOH, but we received notification from the press that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that will be coming out will be reserved for education workers. So, you know, many were celebrating today here, and we are hopeful, and we want to keep that hope, but there are a lot of logistics to work out. It is my understanding there is a plan that will be introduced by Wednesday this week, so we are waiting for the governor's press conference on that, and as superintendents, we're waiting for the official notice, not from the press, but from the governor's office and/or the PADOH or PDE about how this might work with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that was approved on Saturday. Our teachers have been patient, and they have been brave, and I publicly want to thank them again. But I am personally frustrated with the lack of commitment to get the vaccine to Pennsylvania teachers, and I would like to see this process sped up if at all possible. I know logistics are not easy, but if we are bringing students back five days a week, while the CDC has said it is not required that educators should be vaccinated, it certainly would help with another mitigation strategy in our school district. So I will be continuing to advocate for our educators to be vaccinated, and I will continue to be very public about that. And so I would hope that our board and our community members would join me in supporting our teachers, and not just our teachers, but all of our education workers in getting them the vaccine as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Are there any comments, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dr. Vitale, for that report. Just a couple of random thoughts. I believe I heard over the weekend, Dr. Fauci and Dr. Walensky saying that it feels like spring in more ways than one, and the numbers are going down, and the curves are starting to decline, and people are starting to open up a little bit more. But they pointed out that just the visual on the curve shows that we're now at about the point where we were last summer, and last summer, we were all panicked by all this. So I'm sure that's what they call fatigue, not fatigue. But it's not the time to let our guard down. It's not the time to put our masks away. It's not the time to stop washing our hands by any means. A second thought I might share with you, and this came to me as I was listening to you speak. Epidemiologically, we're sort of evolving from the acute incidence phase, lots of sick people, to the long, what's called the long, what they're calling the long-haul phase, the prevalence, chronic prevalence phase. And there's a lot that's not understood about the long-haul phase, but one of the things that is being exhibited in people that are trying to recover is what's being called brain fog, difficulty in formulating ideas and things like that. And it just strikes me again as I listen to you that perhaps Ms. Williams or some other appropriate person could just sort of notify, I guess, the teaching staff that if there are kids that are really having a problem, particularly kids that never had problems before, that maybe one of their diagnostics, differential diagnostics might be that this is a kiddo who spent time in the acute phase, and now we have them in, not the recovery phase, but the long-haul phase of the expression of the disease in a different way. No science there, just a thought and observation.
Thank you. We will work with our nurses on that. I know they are very knowledgeable, and they stay on top of the research. They often give it to me before I see it, and I look for and read a lot of research about COVID every day. So thank you. We'll point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. We will move on. There we are. This is going to be instruction, teaching, and learning during COVID-19. Dr. Vitale and Dr. Pallano, please.
Thank you. I would like Dr. Pallano to cover this topic, but I do want to open it up with, we are very focused on making sure that we don't have learning gaps with our students since last March, and if there are any that are identified, you know, how are we identifying those, and what are we doing about it? So we will be using a lot of our federal money coming our way to conduct specialized summer programming. So I would like Dr. Pallano to talk briefly about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Just to add a little bit of context to that, the district did receive SIR-2 funds, which again are one-time federal funds to help schools respond to COVID-19 impact. The Seneca Valley School District has decided that SIR funds in part will be used to develop summer programming to ensure that students are making adequate progress toward proficiency in end-of-year learning targets. So due to the pandemic, certain students may have a greater need for academic support, specifically in the areas of math and reading. Therefore, these SIR-2 funds will be applied to newly designed summer programs for students who need additional time beyond the school year to demonstrate evidence of proficiency in grade-level essential standards. So collaboration amongst educators and utilizing student learning data, this will all be applied to the qualification process for this year's summer camps that are funded through SIR funds. So just to provide additional information about what the program anticipates to offer for our current students is these summer programs will be based upon the incoming grade level. So this will be advantageous specifically for students who are in a transition year. For example, our current sixth-grade students that will transition to Ryan-Glyer Middle School, our current eighth-grade students that would transition to the intermediate high school, and so on. So each one of our district's buildings will focus on the incoming student population. Therefore, students that are currently enrolled in kindergarten through grade five, summer programming will include a focus on academic skills such as reading and math, as well as developing appropriate social and emotional competencies. At Ryan-Glyer Middle School, we plan to offer camps that focus on the essential skills within math, English, language arts, and science. Students that are entering grades nine through 10 in our intermediate high school, and of course, who meet the criteria for participation, will have the opportunity to participate in summer programming that will focus on biology, Algebra I, and of course, English Essentials. For students that are entering grades 11 and 12 at the senior high school, we will offer things such as SAT and ACT test strategies, Algebra II refreshers, math essentials using Excel, writing workshops, chemistry labs, and also physics labs. In addition to the academic camps, we also hope to enhance this opportunity by providing district transportation to students upon request, and in addition, we are hoping to extend our breakfast and lunch program into the summer programming. So in addition to summer programming specific for students who need additional time beyond the school year to reach proficiency in particular grade level and course standards, we will also continue to offer typical summer programs such as extended school year for our special education population, students that, of course, meet the requirements for that program. We typically offer English as a second language camps and workshops for our students. Students will have the opportunity to participate in course audits. So by participating in a course audit, which of course is free of charge without teacher support, students can continue to engage in grade-level content to review skills from this school year. We will continue to offer credit recovery for those students who need support progressing toward meeting state and district graduation requirements, and of course, the acceleration program through the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice will also be offered. So course audits, credit recovery, and acceleration, these programs are specific to our Seneca Valley Academy of Choice and our cyber programs. In addition, earlier this school year in October, we also shared with you information about the Special Education COVID-19 Impact and Mitigation Grant. Much of that funding is also being used to develop interventions for students who need support as well academically. So I just wanted to give you sort of an overview of how we intend to develop our summer programming specifically based on student need. So that's all I have in terms of an update unless you have questions for me.
Are there any questions for Dr. Pallano, Mr. Nickel?
Dr. Pallano, and I apologize, this might come across a little choppy, but just so, and I read this coming into this evening, I really liked what I saw. Am I to understand, is there a mix of using our Academy of Choice and, you know, physical in-person instruction for some of these programs we're developing, you know, for grades really, you know, K through 12?
Yes, absolutely. So the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice has historically offered the course audits and the acceleration courses and credit recovery, and they will continue to do so. And the newly designed summer program, of course, will target students that need additional time beyond the school year.
And those, and it'll be that programming, it would be more, you know, in-person brick and mortar?
Yes, it will be in-person brick and mortar. We have some information yet to conclude based on enrollment and student participation, so we'll look at the current learning model of the students and determine how it is that we need to deliver these courses for students.
Okay. The next question, and I imagine that each and every year, as students are finishing their grade level, they're probably getting recommendations from their teachers or guidance counselors as to perhaps some coursework they should consider over the summer months. Are we taking that to any sort of a next level as we finish our first full year, you know, with the pandemic as to recommending to, you know, say a sixth grader, you know, you might want to consider the Math Essentials Camp because of kind of where we see you and your progress, you know, in sixth grade? Is it sort of a heightened awareness or a, you know, a different kind of recommendation for our students?
Yes, absolutely. So thank you for asking. We will certainly be taking into consideration evidence of student learning that will include universal screening data as long as, as well as teacher input. So specifically, of course, looking at students and encouraging students to participate that, of course, will benefit from that additional time and exposure to grade-level standards. Fortunately, at Seneca Valley, we are a data-rich school district, so we are consistently looking at student data to determine where deficit skills are and providing just-in-time interventions along the way. So specifically, what we're looking at in regard to programming and that data analysis component combined with teacher input is certainly not new to our district, but we're extending it beyond the school year. So we're consistently looking at student growth, student achievement, and monitoring that over time to ensure that enough progress is being made in order to meet grade-level expectations.
And I think my last question is, the funds that are available, the SIR funds, are for the development of the programming? I'm curious, I mean, a sixth grader who's going into seventh grade who needs to attend and need, you put in sort of air quotation marks, the Math Essentials Camp, is there a cost to that student to attend? I know you've addressed somewhere in here that the cost of transportation should be taken care of, but is there a cost to a family whose, you know, two or three children perhaps may need some of this summer programming?
Right. For the summer programming, for the students that are recommended to participate, there will not be a cost associated with that. So we will be allocating the SIR-2 funds to teacher salaries in order for them to facilitate these camps over the summer, in addition to some supplemental resources that may be needed with that focus on social-emotional learning, and specifically, often too, with some of the labs that we may offer, there will be an additional cost for resources as well in addition to transportation. So we are looking to make this as, you know, this opportunity as welcoming as possible and as engaging as possible for our student population and to make it as convenient as possible for families.
Well, I just, the commentary at the end is just, I think it's great. I mean, we have all, as members of the board, if we've had one email, we've had probably 50 that have said, "My child isn't learning at the pace that they need to be learning." And so kudos to the decision to utilize some of these funds for this kind of summer bridge. You know, whether they're transitioning from one building to a next or not, you know, a third grader needs to be ready to move on to fourth grade. And so this is, it's exciting to see what works going into, you know, focusing on our students as we go over the summer break and into their next grade level. So thank you, Dr. Pallano.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there any other questions or comments? Looking around and seeing none, we will move on in our agenda. Next week, we will be looking to approve the minutes of our meetings from our work session of February 1st, 2021, our regular meeting of February 8th, 2021, and our special meeting of February 17th, 2021, and those are all included in our backup. Also look to approve the treasurer's report, and that is included in your backup. The general funds bill, and this is in your backup as well, and it's going to be in the grand total amount of $3,639,649.71. We'll look to approve the construction fund bills in the amount of $1,810,611.31, and that's in your backup. Are there any questions of any of those items? Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have Mr. Miller, Randy Miller?
I believe he is still on, hold on.
Yes, I'm here.
There he is.
Hi. I just had, when I was looking through the changewaters, I noticed that, I believe it was the power company requested a widening of the route up the hill from the street to the site. Are we, are we running power to the building on wires and poles, or are we doing buried conduit?
Underground utilities all the way up to the building.
Okay, good. That's the right answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to administration action. Mr. Nickel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next week, I will be making a motion with regards to the following board policies. They are all provided in detail in your backup. The first is Policy 209, Student Health Examinations Revised Second and Final Reading. Policy 247, Hazing Revised Second and Final Reading. Policy 249, Anti-Bullying Revised Second and Final Reading. Policy 426, Complaint Process Revised Second and Final Reading. And Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries Revised Second and Final Reading.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there any questions on any of those items? Seeing none and hearing none, we will move on to instruction action. Ms. Harrison, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next week, we'll be voting on the following instruction action items. First would be the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School 2021-2022 Budget. Approve the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School Budget for the 2021-2022 school year in the amount of $6,075,289. Second item is the MIU4 Intergovernmental Agreement. Approve the Midwestern Intermediate Unit for Intergovernment Renewal Agreement for the 2020-21 school year from Mr. Jerry Miller, and also information in our backup. And the last is the grant disbursement, grant permission to apply for and disperse, if approved, the Highmark Foundation School Grant, excuse me, in the amount of $7,500 for health and wellness initiatives that promote a positive school climate. Specifically, funds will be used to create wellness rooms in the senior high school and Ryan-Glyer Middle School for students to have a suitable space to decompress from stress, learn and practice coping strategies, and utilize tools to improve mental and physical health, requested by Ms. Annie Mersing, Director of Advancement, as provided in the backup.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Peterson?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I'm a little chatty tonight, aren't I?
Not a problem.
Just curious, this is a wonderful opportunity, this Highmark grant. Why the senior high school in Ryan-Glyer as opposed to the rest of the schools?
If Ms. Mersing is on the call, she helped with this grant.
I am. Hello, Mr. Peterson. Thank you for the question. We have consulted with several administrators in the district and concluded that these two age groups are in the greatest need of support in the areas of distressing, coping, and improving mental and physical health, which is why we chose these two schools. We also already have a wellness room in the IHS, so we're going to mimic that Ryan-Glyer in the senior high.
A thoughtful process. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? I would, I think, you know, having these in all three buildings of secondary campus, especially coming out of a COVID year, is going to be, you know, a great benefit to the students. And, you know, when we set the foundation up, however many years ago, I don't think we ever envisioned that, you know, it would be having the however many years ago, I don't think we ever envisioned that, you know, it would be having to cope with something like that, but it's been awesome. And Ms. Mersing, wonderful job as always, and I appreciate it that you go out and you find these things and you are thoughtful enough to put it together and go get the money for it. So we appreciate that. Thank you very much. So hearing no other questions or comments, we'll move on to business and finance action. And in Mr. Jacob's absence, I will take this. Next week, we'll be learning, or yeah, looking, learning, jeez, oh, man. We'll be looking to approve the budget transfers that are provided in your backup. The MIU for General Operating Budget, to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Midwestern Intermediate Unit for General Operating Budget in the total amount of three million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars, with Seneca Valley's contribution being one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, and that's in your backup. Change orders to approve the change, or to approve the construction change orders for the new K through six elementary school at Erman Road, as provided in your backup. Any questions or comments on any of those items? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to personal action. Mr. Whitson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next week, I'll be making a motion to approve the resignations, the appointments, leaves, and retirements as provided at the board in its backup material.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitson. We'll discuss any of those items in executive session. So we are in receipt of twenty-four pieces of communication. Dr. Vitale, would you like to address any of the rumors that are out there?
Well, there's always rumors. Which one would you like me to address first?
Specifically on the one, you know, and I know we're going to be saying some communication out later in the week on graduation and prom, but if we could address that.
Yeah, we received a few letters where apparently one person wrote the letter, and then it was cut and pasted to me and to the board. And so anytime we work on events like prom or graduation, we consult our students. They are our number-one customers. So the building principal, the high school principal, Mr. Check, has been working with a group of students. And when they make decisions about what they want their prom to look like in a safe way and how they would like graduation to be handled, we will communicate that to parents. Because while parents are customers, our students are our number-one customers. And they're high school students. They are young adults, and they can, they do a great job with planning. We are limited on venues. There's no doubt about it. A lot of venues have canceled. I mean, people are having difficulty scheduling weddings. So what makes us think that a venue is going to open till such a large school when it comes to the prom? However, the board has never voted on the prom or graduation, and we don't intend to bring that here. This is up to the students, but we do have to do it in a safe way. We still have to follow protocols, and we are still bound by the regulations that exist in the state for outdoor and indoor gatherings. So as soon as the students decide and we have more information to share with parents, we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. I think this is one of those other, you know, the rumor mill's been active on this. Again, you know, I think that, you know, Dr. Vitale stating that the administration is involved, from the principals, the students are involved, you know, something will happen. But whatever happens, most likely will not look like any prom that we've ever seen. But there are communications happening, planning is ongoing. And so hopefully, the seniors, and I have one this year as well, so, you know, I'm part of this group. So hopefully, you know, there will be something that will make it memorable and special for them as well. So hearing all that, is there any other business to be brought before the board? Seeing and hearing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Whitson. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.